Okay, I got seven o'clock. Call a meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Counselor Stenit?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Solzby?
Here.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Mayor Gowing?
Here.
Okay, we got an item to be added to the agenda. We're going under item 7C for resolution for incentive program for vaccination. Do we need a motion on that, Mr. Myers?
Yes.
You're muted.
Yes, you need a motion and a unanimous approval of the council to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Do we have a place where we want to put it?
7C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, move that this item be placed as item 7C in the agenda.
Second. A motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Stenit?
Can I ask just a little more on... Sorry?
I said, "Sorry," I called you. I said, "Counsel Stenit."
Okay, so can I just have a little more on what it is that we're adding to the agenda?
Yes, it's an item to create, a resolution to create an employee vaccine incentive program. Do you have in your, on the agenda, on the line, there is, it's been posted and added in there, all the documents and everything for it? And so if it's added to the agenda, then we'll discuss the particulars and everything. Basically, it's a, we're trying to provide some ways to encourage more vaccinations among city staff to increase the potential for, to reduce the COVID infections that are going on.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
We'll put it under item 7C.
You did have a nay vote. Counselor Irvin voted nay, so it would have to be added as an item on the agenda at the next council meeting then.
Okay. So with that, it brings us to item four. Interested, appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by presiding officer to provide their name and address. Will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comments at this time. However, council may take the comments under advisement and discussion for action at a further council meeting. Right now, I have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Dwayne Taddy?
Hello, Mayor.
Aye.
I want to bring something to the council's attention. This morning on the radio, we were talking about nuisance abatement, and at the last council meeting, I take it you guys all voted to approve a resolution to bill a company upwards of $3,000 for failing to maintain their property. So I brought up a property, 555 North River Road, and I asked if there was a letter sent out to these folks, and the answer I got was, "We're working with them." One of the answers that I got was, "It's under construction." You can see that it's clearly not under construction if you look at the video. Since the council decided to take it upon themselves to approve a resolution to charge a company $3,000 for assistance program in this town that is basically created for fire risk, you might want to take a look at this property here. This property is less than a mile away from City Hall. City staff drives by this property every day, and you should investigate to see if this property has received a letter. If this property has not received a letter, not only, again, I'll restate it, is this unfair to the property owners who have received letters for 12-inch dandelions, but this is a danger to the neighbors. You've got preschool, one property away, you've got trees across the road that you can see that can, that will burn easily, and you've got neighbors all the way around this property. So if the city staff, if you guys do your research and find out that city staff has not sent this landlord, this new landlord, a letter for not maintaining this property that you can see here, that I'm being told is under construction, that has 12, 15, 20 foot of blackberries growing through, there's nobody working here. And if they are under construction, even more reason to come out here with a mower in the morning and mow this down, because when you're working with tools, you strike a nail, you start a fire, and you burn all these people. You burn down Mount David, you burn down all these people's properties, and you put people's lives in danger, including young kids. So if you do the research, find out how many letters this property owner has received, and if they've received zero, hold the people accountable that are supposed to send these letters out, because they've sent them to my friends, they've sent them to my neighbors for dandelions that are 12 and a half inches tall. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is public hearings or is none. Item six, consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item seven, resolution and ordinances. Item A is first ordinance, first vote for ordinance amending chapter 1, 2.16 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code, adopting a new section for alley naming. Mr. Bradsky?
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, council. As you remember, the last regular council meeting, I came before you with a proposal to name street alleys. I explained that the city has been experiencing infill, and more properties are dividing or adding office space to them, and so they're fronting, they're fronting these extra houses onto public alleys. And to, we need a method to address the alleys so we can give them a permanent address according to the city code. I explained that the council named South Fifth Alley in 2020, and explained that Mr. Valley has a new office space that's fronting on the alleyway between Main and Washington. And in the memo I gave you, suggestions that Mr. Valley had. After a lot of great discussion, it was determined that staff, it was confusing because the staff was using our main dividers, the coast fork of the Willamette River and Main Street, in trying to name the first alleys north or south of those landmarks. The mayor suggested the new way, and took the confusion out. So staff is coming back tonight based on the mayor's proposal, and we've, so before you is the new ordinance and the new system, and staff is recommending that you consider the attached ordinance and read it for first vote. Any questions?
We got one person signed up to talk, Mr. Darby Valley. Go ahead and listen to him before we start discussing it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Darby Valley. I live at 206 South 13th Street, and I am the reason for this hoo-ha. I apologize. The, I'm a little concerned by what I just heard, in that it's not what I read on the website. It's changed. Is what I read on the agenda tonight, which you guys are about to read, is what I read, use the river and Main Street as the boundary determiners.
Mr. Bradsky, you want to answer that, or did you hear it?
Yes, I heard it. Darby, Mr. Valley, excuse me. The proposal last week, our last council meeting, I had, we were using South, for instance, Main Street. And the alley that you had front on would be South Main Alley East, I believe. And there was some confusion about going South Main Street Alley East, or, excuse me, South Main Alley East, and then we went North Main East and North Main West. We could have South Main West, and that created a lot of confusion. So...
Thank you. It sounds like you've improved it.
Basically, the mayor's proposal is to delete that confusion and basically go with the next street. South, for instance, in your case, it would be Washington Alley in your case.
Okay, so, good, I read the right thing, so my comments will actually apply. And while it sounds like what you guys are putting out forward is better, I think there's still some issues. I took a look back into the neighborhood over by Chestnut. There's a large alley north of Chestnut Street, which, for this naming convention, wouldn't work unless you were going to call it Holly Alley, because the next street to the north on the other side of the hill is Holly Avenue. Or you're going to name it Kalapuya Alley, after the street far to the east of it that is closest to the north, that doesn't touch it or have any overland next to it. You have a few other confusions on it. When I look through the maps and I'm looking for how many alleys are we actually talking about, we're probably talking about 10 alleys tops. I'm all for planning. Most of you know, that's a hobby of mine. But the reality is, you can overplan. We may have more people needing addresses, and when you need an address, you need it. But unless you're planning to sign the alleys and you're planning on having them all be consistently used, you're going to create more confusion than not. So the alley running east-west immediately to the north of my building would be called Washington Alley. Okay, that kind of makes sense. Washington Alley would run down to Fifth Street. It would jog south a half a block. It would then run north to the Cascade Tool Rental until it gets behind Stacy's. It'll go the other direction, all the way down, basically to Point Arpor. All right? We have a lot of streets that are discombobulated and confused. But you now have, when you're driving, you're not from here, if it is signed, you're going to have two Washingtons, that you have to figure out which one is which. To me, that's inherently confusing, not as confusing as what I've heard prior. The other one is, my address actually drops onto something that would be called South Sixth Street Alley, following the naming conventions as written, which means that per our numbering system, the address for my unit would be 35 South Sixth Alley, whereas my normal address is 35 South Sixth Street. The whole point in trying to get a separate address designation is I'm getting solvents and things delivered that I really don't want coming through my primary clinic space. They need to know to come to the rear. Now, the postal service has no problem with a rear designation. It's on the website. They show it as a standard. They show it as a way. Per normal standards, once you put a name on something, you have to give it a name, so the alley behind my space needs a name. But we're not making it any better, because now I'm going to have 235 South Sixth Alley and Street, so no one's going to be able to make a delivery at any place. So the alley's not helping us. The best rationale I'd heard so far was the alley names will help police and fire find it. Police and fire have been finding it fine without names for a long time, so I don't think that's a very strong consideration. What's more important is, can a FedEx gate guy find it? Can someone who's making delivery and is from this town find it? Can a customer find it? Can my friend who's trying to meet me at my office find it? So when you have names that are repeated over and over again, it gets a little confused. You know, if you took this standard and you applied it over on Bryant Avenue, technically, I think it's 122 South S Street, there's a very long driveway that on the maps looks just like an alley. I assume it's going to the original house in that subdivision, all right? The numbering is off. The numbering is weird. If that was an alley and you named it for an alley, it'd now be Carter Alley, just north of Carter Street. If you named it Bryant Alley, you'd have Bryant Alley, Bryant Court, and Bryant Avenue. So you end up with the same name being used too many times, all right? So it doesn't make things better. It makes them more confused, particularly when you have the same names touching. I think a far better one is to recognize these are exceptions. These are not rules. So to treat them as something we didn't fully planned on is overkill. Two options would exist, all right? One is come up with two more alphabetical lists, plants and animals, you know? And then start naming them south or north based on your criteria. Want to skip it. But something arbitrary and not the same as what's already there within a half block, throwing everybody off. Two, the other one is, take the opportunity to recognize things that have gone on in this town. The General Alley, perhaps Buster Keaton Alley, perhaps Band Alley. I like the diagram, but that's just because I think it'd be cool on my cards. I'm not hung up on what the name ends up being, but if we're going to plan this out and we're actually going to try and make it so that it's something that is useful for all parties involved, other than people putting names on it, then we might want to think about how it's affecting people who are walking around. And for people who think it's easy or it's simple, all right? Remember my address that I told you at the beginning of this little speech, South 13th Street? Or do you think Google's going to fix it? Google thinks I live on 14th, you know, so no one can deliver it to my house unless I give them an easy option. So it's not a minor thing. This is going to affect people who live on these things and who work on these things for a long time. Now, it's pretty much only commercial spaces that are going to need it. When you're residential, having a rear designation is really simple. That's what I was trying for on my spot. Technically, whether my door actually exits onto an alley or just private property, I think it's still in debate. But it doesn't fit the actual planning question that I was bringing up. All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks. We have an ordinance number for this.
3145.
Any discussion? Ms., Counsel Irvin?
Mr. Mayor, the point that stood out to me in Mr. Darby's information was that there would be a confusion having the same street name, the same number, and alley versus whatever the street designation, street, avenue, whatever the case may be. And I guess that's, that seemed to be kind of the most pertinent piece for coming up with a different name or a different naming scheme. But I happen to be failing to see that that would be all that confusing unless someone just wasn't looking at, you know, whatever came after the name. So that's my perspective. I wonder if anybody else, you know, having that perspective, I wasn't quite following, and maybe I, the anomaly pieces, the chestnut, the, there was a couple of other. But I guess I could be convinced to look at that more closely to see if we overlooked something. I don't know if anyone caught that, what the issue would be there specifically on Chestnut and whatever the other ones were.
Mr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chestnut alley, or the one beyond Chestnut, because it would go Birch Avenue, Chestnut Alley, Chestnut Avenue. The next one would then be Dogwood Alley, because that's the next tree in line. So it follows the same naming scheme as the streets, even though there's a long chestnut, Dogwood is not back there because you have the hill. But if you go a little bit further to the west, you find Dogwood in the Sunrise Ridge Development. So it'd be Dogwood Alley.
Thank you, Mr. Gowing, Mr. Mayor Gowing. I'm a little bit more confused now. What I'd like to see is more input from our public safety folks. I mean, to me, response time for police and fire is the most important to doing this for me. So I think we need to get more input. We had some from Danny Solzby. Nice to get some more input from the chief. And maybe, you know, because they're the ones that are going to really have to deal with this more so than than anybody else. I mean, on an important basis. So that's where I feel with this. I'd like to hear more from our first responders. What they think.
Good, Chief.
Scott Jefford, Chief of Police. The police department doesn't have an issue with locations or trying to appoint places. I understand Mr. Darby's information, and he's right. I don't think that we would have a problem locating places. We have a local group of people that dispatch for us. Officers are familiar with every nook and cranny of Cottage Grove, and that's one of the first things that they're trained to do, is be able to find locations that we don't go to very often. Part of the testing process, part of the field training. I wasn't aware, I don't remember hearing about the fire department's issues or concerns from the police department's standpoint. If there was a new residence, a new business location, usually, City Side notifies us of the names and the things that are important to know, particularly location. So that goes into our dispatch and is readily available all the time. Not answering any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Fleck?
Oh, did you want all that Ron?
Mr. Bradsky, do you want to comment?
I just wanted to point out one thing in Mr. Valley's testimony. Because the door is on the north-south side, we wouldn't use his South 35 Avenue, because that's going to be the main door of the second entrance. We would address it based on the code, so it's on the south side of the street. So I believe that is the odd number, and it would kind of associate to what Main Street is being numbered. So just that slight difference from Mr. Valley, but that's all I had to add.
Counselor Fleck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, I think I agree with Counsel Irvin. I think the street naming proposed makes a lot of sense. You know, I'm looking at, when I'm driving through town, the presidents are in order, and it just seems that when I'm looking for a street, I know what street that is because I'm looking for that next president. And I think the alleys are going to go along the same way. You know, sure, at first, I think folks might get the alley and street confused. But I think that's easier than if we had a bunch of different names or, you know, the original configuration, which was, you know, reminded me of my EMT days with the medical posterior, you know, gosh, all the descriptions for where something might be located. So I actually really like this convention. I think I certainly will support it, but I'm certainly open for more discussion.
Anyone else? Mr. Myers?
Yeah, and to build on Ron's statement, the number for that alley address would be somewhere between the 500s and before 600, because they would match that portion of Main Street, because the alley's running east and west instead of north and south.
Okay. So do we get a motion for ordinance 3145? Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, move that...
Oh, sorry, Counsel Solzby.
I just had one comment from Danny Solzby, Fire Marshal.
Sorry, sorry. I just got into tail end of this. Yeah, I agree with the Main Street thing because of mutual aid. We have mutual aid with Drain and with Eugene Springfield. So when they come down here, if it was a Main Street Alley, they would know it was off of Main Street. And then the numbers being in sequence between 500 and 600, their fifth and sixth, we're going to know it's in that alley. And I believe you guys clarified that. That would be not a Sixth Street numbering, but that would be a Main Street Alley, Washington Alley with the 500 to 600 number between that fifth and sixth. So I think that's better for the fire service anyway. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Fleck?
So with that, I'll move that the council have a first reading for ordinance 3145.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any more discussion? With that, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Nay.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Solzby?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye.
Item B, resolution, establish appropriations within the general fund for the expenditure of unforeseen specific purpose grants from the Woodard Family Foundation. Ms. Liggins?
You're muted, Burke.
Burke, you're muted.
I'd have caught you sooner, but I'm having trouble on the screen up on the wall.
Well, you know, give me a second now. I got to get my memo back. There we go. Thank you, Mayor Gowing and City Council. The city's been awarded a pass-through grant from the Community Development Corporation in the amount of $25,000 from the Woodard Family Foundation. The grant is to be used specifically by the Community Development Corporation to assist in supporting the regional accelerator and innovation network, otherwise known as RAIN. It's also in partnership with the City of Cottage Grove's support. In order to lawfully spend the money, the city must comply with the requirements of local budget law. And expenditures in the year of received grants, gifts, requests, or devices transferred to the local government in trust for a specific purpose may be made after enactment of a resolution or ordinance authorizing the expenditure per ORS. It's staff's recommendation at this time that the city council adopt the resolution and establish appropriations for the use of the grant funds for the purpose stated in the amount of $25,000.
Do we have a resolution number?
2055.
Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, move that the council adopt resolution 2055.
Second, second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Solzby?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye.
Okay, business from City Council. Item A is an update from Oregon Department of Transportation on the 2022 Highway 99 project. Mr. Sishen?
Good evening.
You're showing you're on, but you're muted for some reason.
My mic. Do you hear me?
Yeah, I thought Mr. Sishen was going to talk first.
Okay.
You're still not coming through, Mr. Sishen.
Ron's bringing a headphone for you.
I love technology.
Yes.
It's our night for communication problems.
There we go. They're going to trade offices.
All right. You see my, you see me, but do you hear me?
Yeah, you're coming in now. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your patience. Quick update or introduction here. Frannie Brindle, ODOT's Region 2, Area 5 Manager for the Oregon Department of Transportation. for the Oregon Department of Transportation. Will update council regarding ODOT's construction project scheduled for 2022 that will include the reconstruction of Highway 99 between Woodson Bridge and the Cottage Grove Connector overpass. Ms. Brindle's presentation will include the project's key milestones, ODOT's protocol for public outreach, as well as the tentative timeline for construction. Ms. Brindle.
Thank you, Ryan. Mayor Gowing, members of the City Council. My name's Franny Brindle, as I've been introduced. I'm the area manager, which means that I'm in charge of capital construction and project development on the state system. And tonight, we're going to talk about the Oregon 99 Urban Upgrades Project. Next slide, please. So here outlines the project area in orange. The project limits are on Oregon 99 from the Woodson Place intersection to just north of North Lane Street. The area has a mixed use of retail and commercial businesses and residential homes. This section of road is in need of improved pedestrian and bicycle facilities and new pavement surfacing. The City of Cottage Grove Transportation System Plan, known as a TSP, identified the need for the project to better accommodate all modes of travel and to improve safety. A pedestrian crossing fatality was recorded just south of Chamberlain Avenue. I think it's called Greer. In the 2013 to 2017 time period, the crossing is shown on the slide with the little man in the yellow sign. Another pedestrian was more recently killed while crossing at the same location. The project will be improving the crossing by constructing a pedestrian median refuge, meaning they'll have a safe place to land outside of traffic, and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon that could be activated with a push button. The project is approximately half a mile of total length. The north and south sections of the project have distinctly different cross-sections and character. I'll refer to the north section as the section from the I-5 connector to North Lane Street. And the south section is the segment from the I-5 connection to the Woodson Place intersection. As part of the project, we will reconfigure the lanes within the existing curb-to-curb width. We'll stripe for two travel lanes, add a painted center median in the south project section, construct buffered bike lanes, which means they're painted bike lanes with dash lines in them, slash lines in them, buffering, on the south project section. Construct a sidewalk, make ADA upgrades, improve the mid-block crossing just south of Chamberlain, as I mentioned, with the median island and the rectangular rapid flashy beacon, and replace the signal at Woodson Place. We're currently in the design phase, getting toward the end of it. The bid date will be February of 22. The estimated construction start will be spring of 22. We'll need about a year and a half of construction seasons to complete the job. And the estimated completion date will be in 2023. Next slide. It's a lot of information. Next slide. There we go. And so this slide shows the existing cross-sections. And you'll see that there's one cross-section north of the I-5 connector, and that shows the two travel lanes without the median. And there's variable shoulder widths and ditches with a small section of sidewalk. This section is posted at 35 miles an hour. South of the I-5 connector is the cross-section to the bottom. There's four travel lanes, and there's no median and no bike lanes. There's a 52-foot curb-to-curb width, and the posted speed is 25 miles per hour. The lower cross-section shows 13 feet at the inner lanes, the inner two lanes, but double separated striping utilizing about two feet of that, which makes the inner lane, the inner lanes currently really 12 feet in width. Next slide. So this slide will show the future cross-sections. And you'll see them separated again into north and south sections. North of the I-5 connector, the project will construct a curb and sidewalk only on the west side of the highway. This addition enables Frontier Village, Juniper Park, and the Riverside Apartments residents to walk safely to the shopping area. It will also add street lighting. And the lane widths will not change from the existing condition in that segment. And then north of the I-5 connector, the project will repave the entire roadway, reconfigure the lane striping within the existing 52-foot curb-to-curb width. The new configuration will provide two-foot travel lanes, a painted center turn median, and painted buffered bike lanes. There'll be an upgrade of existing pedestrian crossings with the RRFB or the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the concrete center refuge with permanent curb-to-curb width, and the concrete pedestrian refuge will be 21 feet in each direction. Yes. And then the Woodson Place signal will be a complete signal replacement. Next slide. So we're going to be talking about what the construction will look like when we have the lane closures taking place during construction. So stage one, we're going to be constructing a storm sewer trunk line in the center of the highway. And you'll see in the center of that cross-section, you see pipe center line under construction. And this will allow for construction to occur in the center of the highway. But the north, there'll be a single northbound and southbound lane on either side of the construction. The pipe will be constructed in short segments with left-turning movements provided for business access. And typically during construction, and I would imagine it would be the same here, there would be signage on the road to indicate for people where access is to the businesses. Next slide. So it looks like this would be stage two of the urban upgrades. And the reason we have this detail at this point is because we went before motor carrier, which is the trucking committee, to talk about how freight would move through the section, any permitted loads, and we wanted to make sure that they knew that we had enough lane width even during the temporary construction to accommodate traffic and freight. So stage two, we're going to construct sidewalk and pavement on the west side of the highway. There'll be single lane closures with the southbound lane shifted to run an existing inside northbound lane. And then there'll be 14-foot horizontal clearances, so across with a soft barrier. And then motor carrier restricted to 12-foot wide lanes. Wider loads will be accommodated on a case-by-case basis with advance notice. So in other words, we'll be accommodating most of the freight in the area. And if there's a permitted load and we need to do anything to change the cross-section, we can do that. And then the lane closures will be allowed daily during the construction in that section, in that stage. Next slide. Stage three would be construct the sidewalk and pavement on the east side of the highway. Single lane closures with northbound lane shifted to run on existing inside southbound lane. 14-foot horizontal clearance again with the soft barrier and motor carrier again restricted to 12-foot wide lanes. And we can accommodate wider loads with advance notice. Lane closures again would be allowed, so basically shifting of the traffic. Next slide. And finally, stage four would be construct the pedestrian refuge island between Chamberlain Avenue and Greer Avenue. The 14-foot horizontal lane clearance between the curb and south barrier in both directions, and then motor carrier with the 12-foot wide loads and wider loads with advance notice. Next slide. So the design team continuously continues to look for accelerated construction strategies that will minimize the impact to surrounding businesses, homes, and motorists. Construction will occur primarily in the daytime. Next slide. The city identified waterline upgrades that were needed within the project limits. ODOT and the city have worked together to incorporate the city waterline upgrades within the project contract. So in other words, when the construction's occurring, our contractor will be doing that construction work. The city has funded the estimated 227,000 in upgrades, and the ODOT construction contractor will make the improvements. Integrated construction will save money and integrate seamlessly into a project with less impact to the public. Improvements at the intersection of Highway 99 at Woodson Place needs to utilize a small amount of property owned by the city adjacent to the ODOT right-of-way. The city has partnered with ODOT to allow the improvements and has saved the project money by not having to go through a formal right-of-way acquisition process. Now for public outreach. The city is engaged to helping us spread the word. They've been using their social media feeds to help keep the community updated. We will be sending an E, what we call an E update, to our interested parties list tomorrow. And we'll expand the reach by coordinating the City of Cottage Grove Facebook, Friday Update, the blog, and the Construction Corner. ODOT's using Kojita Partners, and Ellen Tenety is here tonight. And she's working as our public involvement consultant and has been helping through the project design phase. Just prior to the pandemic, they were able to canvas the neighborhood on foot, speaking to people and handing out project flyers. They were able to speak in person with each adjacent business, identify property owners, and then keep people informed and questioned answered by telephone. Next slide. Future public outreach will include an online open house in mid to late autumn, so coming up this fall, to see if there's any questions or concerns that we can address. And during that online open house, we will call and visit the adjacent businesses and residences to ensure that they know about it and make sure that we have up-to-date contact information for ongoing communication. After our construction, contractor is on board. We will hold a second online open house in the spring. And again, we'll listen to questions and concerns. And this time, we'll have our contractor available to answer questions and to put a name with a face and be the face of the project during construction. Ongoing, we will keep our website updated and email our contact list any construction impacts that would impact traffic flow. The construction update is laying countywide, is a great resource for timely information. And we have this thing called Trip Check, which is also very helpful, although this information will be more to the scale of the community. And we'll be updating with construction schedules that are subject to change. What I rolled out tonight was the stages of construction as we saw them in design. The contractor might change that slightly. You know, it's up to them, it's their purview, to change the way they want to construct to meet their requirements for construction. But they have requirements in the specifications about leaving lanes open, of course, and making sure the lane widths are adequate, at least 12 feet, et cetera, and to provide information to us so that we can get it out. We'll be paying attention to the residents of Cottage Grove that are impacted by this construction. But so far, I've heard that people are happy that the city has arranged for these improvements and look forward to enjoying this completed project. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to take them. And those I can't answer, I'll get back to you later with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brindle, for this presentation. And I want to thank you and ODOT for, I think it was almost two years ago, you reached out to me to have a meeting on just the talk of this and to include the city right off the bat, I think was really good. And we've been able to work through a lot of issues over the time. And I know Mr. Sishen's put a lot of work in this. And thank you for everything you've done on this to help get us through, especially with getting the temporary crosswalk and everything. That was, it just, we've come a long ways with this project, and I'm really excited about seeing it through.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else for questions or comments? Counsel Stenit.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I wondered, I'm sure there would be variables with regard to weather, et cetera, but can you give us a little better idea of what, I believe you said a year and a half of construction seasons might, how that might play out, you know, based on the typical year and the length of the season?
Yeah, so what we're expecting is that the spring of 2022 is when the contractor would be ready to start. Now typically, we know that the spring has got kind of a wet weather element to it, but there is some work that can be done in the spring and also in cooler temperatures. You know, concrete work can get done in those times. The signal work can get done during those wetter seasons. The thing that's mostly a constraint for temperature and weather is the paving itself. We have to have, you know, hot, dry weather, much like we've had most of the summer. We could pave all summer if we wanted to. You know, that's really going to be our constraint. And also the staging so that, you know, we can have traffic open. So I, you know, I see that that's why we have that year and a half in the schedule so that we can allow for, you know, the paving that might not be able to get done next summer, which I think that the goal is to get that like August-ish, September, to get the paving done, from what I understand. And if not, we can bleed it over to the next, first part of the next year, potentially, and finish it up. Now, it might go faster. It all depends on the contractor, who we get, and how quickly they can work. But we're just anticipating from our experience.
Any other questions? Mr. Sishen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your comments earlier. Franny, it looked like, according to the schedule tonight, that the pedestrian crossing is going to be built in 2023 now. Is that correct?
That's what it's showing on this schedule. And like I said, that could, that's potentially could change depending on what the contractor's scheduling could be and how they want to lay it out. This was something that we had, the designers had anticipated, could be how it would be staged, just so that we could show the motor carrier group that, yeah, we'd open up one side of the street with a lane in each direction, and this is how the staging could work. So that's potential, it could be in 23. But it's not to say it couldn't happen sooner than that.
Thank you. It would obviously be an important milestone for us to see it sooner than later. Appreciate all of your coordination and Jeff Lang's coordination as well.
Well, I'll bring that back to the group.
Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Frances and Ellen.
Item B is council acknowledgement of approval of water management and conservation plan. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Before you this evening is acknowledgement of the approved water management and conservation plan. On July 28, 2021, the Oregon Water Resources Department approved Cottage Grove's water management conservation plan pertaining to water right permit number S-42117. The water master management conservation plan is required by state law, OAR Chapter 690, Division 086, for the approved water right use extension that the city's received for the water right. GSI Water Solutions, Inc., prepared and submitted the conservation plan to the Oregon Water Resources Department. The approved conservation plan requires-- The approved conservation plan requires the city to perform the following, which are annual water audits to determine water loss, public outreach, encouraging water conservation, provide leak detection kits, and finally provide low-flow showerheads and faucets. I'd like to expand on the leak detection kits. There was a question asked on Friday. Essentially, that kit is not what I was envisioning as a kit. It is a flyer of recommended ways to find leaks in your house if there's determined to be a leak. It talks about installing shut-off valves, checking your toilet bowl for leaks, water heater, your valve stops for your faucets and various different things. So it's really a pretty comprehensive flyer that would be made available to all of our users. The water management conservation plan also includes a plan for water curtailment actions. City staff will work with legal counsel to prepare code language for counsel to consider for updating the city's municipal code to incorporate the water management conservation plan curtailment actions. Attached is the approved plan and the approved final order from the Water Resources Department. The approved plan is good until July 28th, 2031 and requires a progress report to be submitted by July 28th, 2026. So we have milestones or items that we've got to prepare every five and 10 years in relationship to the plan. So the recommendation from staff is the council by motion to acknowledge the Oregon Water Resources Department approved water management conservation plan. Are there any questions?
Counselor Fleck.
Will we get updates on the loss? That was the item I kind of brought up Friday as a concern because I think it was, the number was 10 and we're, you know, typically over that at this point. And so will we kind of get updates on how we're doing on progress towards that?
Yes, we will. We will provide the audit, yearly audit information to the council. And I'll also give updates as we find leaks, if we detect that there are leaks and our progress on getting those corrected. So yes, we'll bring back all information to the council so that you're aware of our effort. The projected loss right now is 14%. And it was based on our old meters and kind of non-scientific estimates of, you know, backwash process, line flushing, hydrant cleaning, various different things. So we're going to do, use meters and be able to determine that loss at a greater accuracy in the future. And I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to be well below the 14% and hopefully within the 10% range.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Fleck?
I guess I'll make the motion. I move that the council acknowledge the Oregon Water Resources Department approved water management conservation plan.
We have a second. I'll suck it up, Mr. Mayor. Motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a question on the process of perfecting the water rights. I understand this is an element to that or prerequisite to that. I mean, how far does that push us along having this adopted?
So it's a requirement of the extension of the water right. The water right's been extended for 40 years. I plan on meeting with Mr. Sussman from GSI. Actually, I believe it's next week, we have a date to talk about next steps because ultimately what we want to do is perfect the final component of the water right, S-42117. But it doesn't waive us, once it's perfected, it doesn't waive us the responsibility of performing this management conservation plan because the state legislature is, wants water distributors to be aware of conservation measures and the value of water and to make sure that, you know, water isn't being wasted. So it's a new requirement that's being phased in as cities and other bodies are renewing their water rights or acquiring more water rights. It's a requirement they'll have to, everybody will be following.
So to clarify that, this is an extension, it's for the extension of the water rights, not necessarily a part in the process to perfect them, other than it just being a requirement for everybody that's, every municipality that's using water?
Yep. I believe you've restated it correctly. It's for the extension approval for us to use that water right, this is a requirement and it'll still be a requirement once we've perfected the water right too.
Any more questions? Counselor Stenit.
Yes, I had a couple, if I may. Do we feel currently that the city has the plans and the capacity, staff-wise, et cetera, to institute the public outreach campaign? Do we know the timeline on that? It mentioned that funds were scheduled to be set aside for the water conservation program. Has that happened this year? Is that something I may have missed or?
It's just, Counselor Stenit, it's part of our operating budget and yes, there's funding available in there. We were hoping when we proposed this measure that when we do attend public outreach events such as the backpack and the emergency fair that we've put up, that when we have a booth, we would have little kits available that include faucets, showerheads, various different things that residents could take free of charge. So yes, those are available and we have, I believe, a two-year period that we need to get that instituted. So we got plenty of time to get that arranged and get the kits ordered on hand.
Thank you. I had one other question too. On page 37 of the report, it talks about aquatic resource concerns and then water quality Maybe I missed it or maybe it was somewhere that didn't show up to me anyway. The categories there under the coast fork and the Rau, category five, category four, I wasn't sure what those meant. Maybe I missed it again, but.
And you said that, once again, Counselor Stenit, that was page what?
37.
In the report, I have. Oh, thank you. I think I'm still in the wrong place. You said it's 2.
Well, I think it's actually, page 2-21 of the report, it's the 37th page of the entire packet there.
So this is, if I understand this correctly, you know, one of the requirements that we have is a fish persistency requirement on our water rights. And essentially, these are the water quality standards because we have endangered fish in our aquatic system. These are the areas that we need to follow. And you can see in the coast fork, actually, the Rau River is the one where we take our waters. So we would be, the criteria is temperature responding, temperature year-round turbidity and then the bio criteria. So those are the items that would apply. Also, some of our water right is still up at length. So temperature, once again, is year-round up there. So those are the items that apply that we need to follow, if that makes sense.
Okay, I'm just curious what the categories mean. It's a measurement that I didn't see.
Yeah, category is five. I'm not sure. I'd have to get that information and get it back to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a hyperlink, Counselor Stenit, at the bottom of that page that takes you to an actual definition of those different categories because that's the only place in this whole document that references category five. But if you follow the hyperlink, it reads out, "Data indicated designated use is not supported or water quality standard is not attained," but it reads out there.
I didn't read down far enough. Thank you, Counselor Irvin.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion with a second. There's no more questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Okay, item C is safe routes to school and Fillmore stormwater outfall project change order approval. Ms. Bradby.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening again. Since December of 2020, I've been becoming before council to get approval on out-of-scope work items to be done on the project. Some have been basically a pass-through where we're getting reimbursed by branch engineering and/or South Lane School District. There are five items left to be done or dealt with in the project, so I can close it out. Those five items are reconstruct the southwest corner of South 8th and Taylor Avenue. Again, this is a pass-through item. That work was done in June. City crews removed the concrete and while this came back in, recreated and set the forms to the new design. Again, this will be paid for. We missed an irrigation system or a run at Lincoln Middle School. City agreed to pay half to meet fire code standards. There were two fire hydrants that did not meet current fire code, which says, states that we, there needs to be three feet clearance around all the fire hydrants. The two are missed are near on the ball field of Lincoln Middle School and we have to modify sections of fence. And then we had on our performance evaluation of the bioswale to make sure it was constructed to meet the criteria that it was designed for. Basically, the slopes of the bioswale vegetation has died off. It's been receded once or twice and it's still, and we're getting erosion in the side. So we've looked at installing a permanent irrigation system off the school property well, and we can use their irrigation system to water the sides and then we will use compost to give the new seeds nutrients to take root in. And then we're also going to use a matting product that helps hold the seeds in place. The last item is we need to change the contract completion date from August 31st to September 30th, 2021. That change totals $18,553.41. Again, I remind council that we will be reimbursed, item one of the 18,000. So staff provided, again, expenditure budgets for the project and staff is recommending approval of these items to make change order 11. Is there any questions?
Counselor Fleck.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve change order number 11 for the safe routes to school and Fillmore stormwater outfall in the amount of $42,553.41.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, item D is planning commissioner appointment. Counselor Soulsby and Mr. Mungin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, August 23rd, we held two interviews for one vacant seat on the planning commission. The applicants were Garland Burbach and Aaron Lieberman, and the candidates had different but great skills, so it was a very difficult decision. But the subcommittee recommends council appoint Garland Burbach to a three-year term beginning January 1st, 2020 and expiring December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Thank you. Okay, item E is authorization to sign a purchase and sales agreement and joint access and maintenance agreement resolving the armory property line issue. Ms. Sishen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors, again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. That's a lot of nodding heads. That's great. All right, let's jump right into it. In 2020, the city hired professional land surveyor, Dan Baker, to complete a boundary survey and map of the armory property located at 628 East Washington Avenue. During the boundary resolution process, Mr. Baker discovered that a portion of the land under the northwest corner of the armory building is located on property that includes the old city hall building at 28 South 6th Street owned by Mr. Martin Henner. The encroachment of the armory building into the Henner property measures approximately 2.8 feet wide by 50 foot long, or about 140 square feet. And we have diagram one up, so that red hatched area there at the northwest corner of the building. When contacted by staff, Mr. Henner agreed to the city's purchase of the 140 square feet of land in the amount of $2,300. Pending approval, the purchase of that portion of land would include the completion of a property line adjustment and a joint access and maintenance agreement. The joint access and maintenance agreement would allow city crews to place equipment within the space between the armory building and the old city hall building in order to maintain the armory building. Let's see here, Mr. Henner has documents for his signature and pending their receipt, we will finish the property line adjustment. So our recommendation is that city council authorize the city manager to sign the attached or the purchase and sale agreement and joint access and maintenance agreement that you received as part of your packet. Are there any questions?
Counselor Fleck.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the attached purchase and sale agreement and joint access and maintenance agreement.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, concerns of council. Counselor Fleck.
So Mr. Myers or Fay, Mr. Totti brought up some grass over height. Were you guys going to address that at any point during city managers? Or I guess let me just go ahead and go there. So I guess I would agree that I think we need to treat all citizens as fairly as possible. I know that the city does that. I could not tell from that video where that property was. You know, it was a little bit small on our screen, so if staff doesn't know, maybe Mr. Totti can reach out and give an address and we can check that out. You know, grass height is important. I actually wasn't here during that meeting, I was on vacation, but I certainly would have assessed fines. You know, the city works with folks quite a bit before getting to the point of actually placing a lien. So that means that somebody absolutely did not respond over an extended period of time. And so I guess I totally support the city in what it is doing and has done, but I do want us to always make sure that we're. but I do want us to always make sure that we're going out of our way to treat everybody the same to the extent possible. So I guess I'd love us to just follow up and make sure that, that that is in fact happening here.
Did you want to respond, Mr. Stewart, I see you're.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'd share with you that this year, like last year, it's been a little bit challenging in trying to enforce the, the tall grass. The biggest challenge is, is that at times the ability for residents to take care of the tall grass is, that's not possible. We had at least two weeks, possibly more this year where we've been in the extreme condition and you're not able to go out and remove the grass, so that's been a challenge. We've also been at times down two employees in the planning department, so it's been hard to get all the documentation out. I want to say, because the last time I talked with our staff here in the office, that that area was completed and letters were sent, so I'd have to verify the letter was sent to that individual. But I knew, I do know today that he was contacted and shared that by our current senior planner working with this individual and trying to get their permits perfected so they can get their work completed. This project has started and had to be stopped because of floodway concerns that were brought to our attention in processing their application, but it's my understanding contact was made and the owner is aware that that grass needs to be mowed. And he does have the ability to do it between before ten AM in the morning and after eight PM. So hopefully we'll see that grass taken care of very soon.
Thank you very much.
Any others? Counsel Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might just like to make notice that I will be leaving on my sixtieth birthday vacation in three days and will not be here at the next meeting, I'll be back on the fifteenth. That's all I have.
Counsel Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I was contacted by a local tour guide who was giving tours in our beautiful historic downtown. They were doing walking tours, murals and historic spots, but they made note that there's not very many benches to sit at for folks who are walking around downtown as well as trash cans that are accessible. So I know that there's a plan in the forward future talking about a downtown refinement, but is there a plan happening sooner than that to potentially put in more benches and trash cans?
We'll look into it.
Okay.
The current benches and trash cans that are downtown were placed there by the EBID and maybe even some downtown association when they had some money. So they're the ones that have taken care of and, and done that work and put those. I think there's, I think there's a bench on each block and a trash can on each block, but I'm not sure. Some of them have been removed or disappeared over the years or run over by a car and stuff like that.
Thank you, and I've got a couple of things, so thank you for bearing with me. I got an email on July twenty-second from a, a gal who lives over by a house on Chestnut Street and she was really concerned about the activities that were going on there and not feeling safe. And she contacted me today because she has still not received a response back. I'm wondering if she can expect a response or if we have an update on that house.
Mr. Stewart?
Now, I'll do my best to give you an update and Mr. Mungin might hopefully be able to pitch in. We have been working with legal counsel to go through the process of getting the house vacated. We were able to receive a search warrant or a warrant to enter the property and do an assessment on the property and the building official, official, Mr. Bush had, has determined that the house is a danger and not safe to live in. And we're using the dangerous and derelict code in, in the city municipal code, which allows us to request the property to be vacated and, and then request the owner to make repairs. So we've been in the process, we did the assessment, we received a warrant from the judge to post the and request the vacation of the property. We intend on going back to the property, I believe, this week to do a follow-up. But it's our, our last one we did two weeks ago, the individuals, or at least, at least the homeowner, Mr. Simeon is still living on the property and has no intentions on vacating. And so we are gonna do a second warrant to look into the property and see if the property has been vacated. If not, we are working with legal counsel in our next possible steps of going to circuit court, Lane County Circuit Court to get an eviction notice. There are some challenges with this piece of property because he is an owner occupied piece of property and I believe that there's some rights afforded under the homeowner, home, home, what was it, homes? Homestead, thank you, Homestead Act that makes it a little bit more challenging to remove the actual owner that lives on the property. So we're trying our best to mitigate the efforts there or mitigate the impacts and working with the neighbors. I, I'm remiss, I, I'd ask that, I get that, if you could send me that July twenty-second email again, I can certainly send an update to the, to the neighboring property to let them know what our efforts are and where we're at.
I'd be happy to forward that to you, thank you. The next email that I got was later this evening, somebody emailed me asking when the gravel was going to be cleaned up off of Main Street, I guess there's gravel going into storm drains, maybe this is known or unknown, do we have an update?
Mr. Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Counsel Savage, this project is a Lane County project. This is portion, there is a small portion that is Cottage Grove, a portion of Cottage Grove's roadway, but the majority of this work is, is being done on county. The county road, it's a process, they put the gravel down and they come back and do multiple sweepings and apply additional seal coats to it. So it's kind of a work-in process, I would imagine this week we'll, we'll see work being done and hopefully that rock being removed. I have asked our city staff, hopefully tomorrow, to be able to get the sweeper out and take care of some gravel that, I don't know if it, a tailgate was left open by the county or what, but there's some fine gravel on our street and a little bit before the project on Main. So I've asked our crew to, to try to sweep that up the best that they can and hopefully we'll get that done tomorrow.
Thank you, I really appreciate the conversation, thank you, that's it.
Any others, Mr. Counsel Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to share appreciation for the events that are occurring over the weekend. The WOE Fair, everyone that put those on, as well as the, the cruise and the car show, I think that was KND. You know, those are, those are some of the neatest things to participate in the community and just get to see everybody over the summer and really appreciate that. Also wanted to call out the Buster Keaton mural. Wow, what, what a difference between what was up there before and what's there now. I think that really represents, well, not only the movie and Buster Keaton, but the town a lot better. It's really nice to see those things. That's it.
Counsel Soulsby?
I too would like to say the cruise and the car show were a great event and thank you Cottage Grove and KND and everyone who was involved in that. And also, I have not heard anything about the Simeon property and I would be curious to know what the violations are there.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd just like to say I was really pleased to see the, the car show activities and the WOE Fair and Counsel Irvin, you and your family, I kept running into you everywhere I was going, so it was like we're on the same page. But it was, it was nice to get out and enjoy, it was a great weekend for the weather, it wasn't too hot and it was, in fact, we had a little bit of rain on Saturday morning, which was kind of unusual in August. But, uh, you know, the, we've really got a, a high impact with the COVID Delta variant and it's really impacted a lot of people, I'm sure Mr. Myers will cover this in his report, but you know, a lot of the city staff's being affected by it, my work is being affected by it. We, we're, we're shorthanded with people out all over and it's, it's out there, it's real. It's, you know, do what you can to prevent it, it's not going to go away anytime soon. I, I can see Alicia Beamer is on here from Peace Health, she's the CAO of, of our local. And, and I got a call from one of her staff today, right before this meeting and talked about it and they're, they're running at high capacity at the hospitals and it's, it's really, you know, they've had to put, put off elected surgeries because of it, they don't have the manpower to, to take care of people afterwards in recovery. And so, you know, let's, uh, let's all work together and get this thing beat before it gets worse. And with that, we will go into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mark Simeon's property on the Chestnut site, there's a multitude of violations and issues associated with that. Primarily, the home is in a condition that is unsafe to occupy, there's no foundation, there's holes in the roof that go clear through the building, walls are not attached anywhere, rot and no plumbing, no utilities are connected to the house, a water sewer. He had a number of individuals that were residing in the home with him. We have, the police department has arrested at least two of them and hauled them away. One of them on significant charges that took him outside of our jurisdiction as well. So it's, it's a significant problem, there are issues associated with the ownership of the property. It is a challenge to try to resolve and is taking a considerable amount of time of staff and even our plant, our building department to try to put together everything we need to do to go through the steps. There are a lot of protections to allow them to continue to live there and we're trying to make sure we go through those so that we can get them out of that property. It should not be habited and it's definitely a, a problem for the neighborhood. So that's kind of in a nutshell, if you want more, well, we can, we can talk more about some of the specifics and issues and share you some, some pictures and stuff of what's going on with the property. Tuesday more, Saturday morning, Lane County Public Health issued a new recommendations and Lane County, County Commissioners are going to meeting as, be meeting as the Board of County Health to make some more recommendations and requirements within the community. One of those requirements is regarding large outdoor events. So the car cruise, which was spectacular and show and shine, which was great. And I did see Counsel Irvin and his kids and family, but they were making, they had their eyes set on the lemonade and that's, they didn't see anything else, they were moving to the lemonade for one of the booths. So, but, and the recommendations from Lane County Public Health are that those kinds of events that now will hold more than two hundred or possibly hold two hundred people need to be postponed. And when they've made a recommendation like that and they've strongly encouraged that to be followed, if we don't follow it, then we're responsible. We've discussed with the Chamber of Commerce about the concert in the park Wednesday. They're concerned that they don't have any way to keep attendance down or monitor or regulate spacing or mask wearing. And they're also recommending that in large events like that, that masks be worn indoor or outdoor. So the Chamber of Commerce has postponed the concert in the park, that is the last one for this Wednesday on the twenty-fifth with Windy Ridge, so they will be postponing that and will let us know when there'll be a date that they'll be looking forward to again. I had a conversation with one of, another band that is wanting to come and perform a concert in the, in Bohemia Park and they were scheduled for next weekend and they're pushing their concert back outside the two-week period and see what happens then. In visiting with Peace Health officials, Alicia, the expectation is that this resurgence is going to peak in October, the beginning portion of October, and so it's going to continue to get worse until that time. And so we're trying to do everything and anything we can to, to mitigate those and, and take care of that. So that's what's going on with those, those issues. I anticipate that if it continues, we will hear something from the governor as well. And we'd, we'd love to be able to take those steps we need to take locally that we can prevent or slow it down to where we don't get severe issues or lockdowns or changes that we've had in the past. Today, just for your information, if you didn't see the news, the Pfizer vaccine was approved. So it has full FDA approval now and has gone through all the testing and made all the, the the clinical studies and everything that it needs to do to have its approval. So that's good news for the efforts and, and moving forward there, that's all I have.
Okay, so one thing I did forget was I wanted to get a subcommittee to go over council rules and we'll bring them back if there's any changes need to be. And I'd like the committee to be myself, Council President Fleck and one other counselors or anybody wants to work on the council rules with us. Counsel Roberts? Okay. Probably in the next, next few weeks. Okay.
Well, and I'm actually gone in that second week of September.
So we'll, we'll do it after, so it'll probably be October-ish before we even get it back to the council. Yeah, okay. So with that, there is no city attorney and there's no items removed, so we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.